All right, it's 6:30, so we're gonna start the Valentine's Day Planning Commission meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Hopefully you don't hate me for having a Valentine's Day meeting.
Hey, it's not your fault, it's just when Wednesday falls, right?
But it shows the priority for housing in the city of Lompoc.
Beautiful, all right.
Commissioner Chiogni?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Present.
Commissioner Bridge?
Present.
And Commissioner Braxton is absent tonight.
Okay, so we're gonna go into oral communications. This is when you get to talk about things that are not on the agenda. I'm just gonna remind once that there is also a phone number you can call if you're not here, 805-875-8201. I'm just gonna say that once in the beginning, and that's it. Anyone here that wants to do that? No one is rising, is there anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone.
All right, we're gonna close oral communication and we're gonna move to consent calendar. I believe we need to receive an annual report.
This item is on consent, so we usually don't do a staff report or staff presentation.
Okay, so do we still need to approve the vote on the calendar? I forgot, I think we do, right?
Yeah, just regular vote.
All right, so I'm gonna move that we receive and approve the 2023 general plan annual report.
I motion to approve the 2023 general plan annual report.
And I second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that one is approved. So we're gonna move to the first public hearing item, which is the La Purissima Court Plan Residential Development Investing Tentative Track Map, DR 20-07 and LOM 624. And can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening Chairman and members of the commission. Tonight we have La Purissima Court Plan Residential Development. All right, so the project is located at 930 North V Street. It is zoned R1 and open space. It is approximately 3.3 acres and surrounded by residential uses and a care facility, which is also zoned R1. And across the street is an area for Hway for another residential development. And the OS portion, open space portion, is along the creek drainage area right in here. The project is to subdivide this lot into 20 lots. 18 lots will be for residential uses, or residential homes, two for common lots. The homes will be approximately 2,440 square feet. The project also includes covered parking, landscaping, screening, and amenities. The project is requesting a density bonus of 26%. With the density bonus, they can obtain essentially five additional units. So normally, based on our general plan and zoning code, the base is 13 units, but with the density bonus, they can get five additional, so 18 units total. As a part of that, they're also, per the general plan and our municipal code, they get to have two of the units to be for low-income residential. Because they have the density bonus and the low income for those two units, government code allows deviations from the municipal code, in this case, lot area, lot width, lot depth, lot coverage, and side yard setbacks. And I'll go over that in more detail on this next slide. So on the left here is the base zoning code standards, on the right is what the project is proposing, utilizing the state density bonus laws. So in this particular case, normally a lot area minimum of 7,000 square feet, and they're proposing 2,656 square feet at its smallest. The vast majority of the lots are about 2760 square feet. Lot width minimum 50 feet per zoning code, proposal is 40 feet. Lot depth 90 feet, the proposal 69 feet. Lot coverage maximum 40%. The largest one with the development is 45%, however, most of the lots are at 43%. Street side setback normally 10 feet, in this case, there's two lots that are 5 feet for a street side setback. And as for guest parking spaces, normally parking spaces is at 9 feet wide, however, guest parking is actually not a requirement, so the project wants to have guest parking spaces. So they're going beyond the normal, normally you just need to have the covered spaces for the residential units, but they're also wanting the guest spaces. And also, our code allows compact spaces to be 7 feet wide, so they're proposing 8 This is the existing site looking south from North Street. This is the track map, the proposed track map delineating the properties for the residential units, the property for the private drive going around them, and the section that will be the OS section, open space section, which is the creek area. This is the site plan showing how the buildings will be situated on the individual lots. The landscaping plan showing how the landscaping will be dispersed throughout the property along the edges, on the back. There is a condition also for having landscaping along the front, and the two amenities, which is a picnic barbecue area at the corners here. So for architecture, the buildings incorporate board and baton siding, lap siding, stucco siding, axed shingle siding, covered porch, entry lighting, and composition shingle roofing. There are five schemes. The primary difference between the five schemes is how the entrances look, and the roof lines, and the dispersment of the materials, where some of it have more siding versus stucco. I'll pass out the colors of materials board here, or Brian Wall, it's the colors board, This is the floor plan, the first floor, showing the porch, the entryway, the two-car garage, living and kitchen area, and then the second floor has the bedrooms, four bedrooms, and then the two bathrooms and the laundry room. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolutions for the map and the development plan, or provide other direction. And that concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant and architect are available here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stones. Are there any questions before we start?
I have a couple quick questions.
No, yeah.
Sorry, they confuse me. Could we go back to the map, to the... Either of those, that's fine. I heard the statement, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, I'm not too worried, but are we counting the ditch? Is that, am I seeing the ditch that runs along the main drag there?
Yes, so that would be this section in here. There's like a kind of a roadway right here, and then this ditch area is in here.
And that's what you call the creek?
Yeah, the creek, yeah.
You're calling that open space?
It's zoned open space. Yeah, zoning-wise, it's considered open space.
Okay. Not what I would normally call open space, but, okay. You had two units for, I probably won't get the exact term correct, but low income?
Yes, correct.
Will those actually be low-income units, or are those now eligible for in lieu of?
No, they have to actually be low-income units, yeah. And the conditions also indicate that they have to do an agreement, and the city gives them that, and...
But they can't be in lieu of?
Well, it'd be for low. Repeat your question, please.
They can't be in lieu of?
No, not in lieu of.
If I could just clarify, and I think Brian might piggyback on this comment, if they wanted to pay in lieu fees, they would have to come back to the planning commission, and you would have to approve it. Right now, there has been no request for in lieu fees, therefore, they would have to build them, but they do have a choice under our ordinance, but they did not request that, and that's not on the table this evening.
I would make a revision to that, so as you all know, the city has a 10% affordability requirement. We call it the inclusionary requirement, and in order to meet that requirement, you can either build the unit or you can pay in lieu fees. But then there's a separate thing called the state density bonus law. And under that, if you wanna get certain benefits to your project, like more density or relaxed development standards, you have to build the units. And so since they have requested those things here, they have to build the units. So if they decided they didn't want to build them and wanted to pay in lieu fees, then it wouldn't just be coming back for that change, but they would have to redesign their whole project. So they have to build them if they want this project as it's designed.
I have one more question, kinda just, is there some credit being taken or some requirements being met requiring open spaces for this kind of development that we're using the ditch as meeting that requirement? Or is that just, it happened to be open space, so you called it open space?
Well, as a part of the subdivision ordinance, there is a requirement for having amenities, depending on how many units you have. So for amenities purposes, they are having the barbecue stations. I'm a little confused on what you mean by the ditch, I mean, that's just existing zoning. It's just exist...
No, I was asking, again, I'm probably getting over my skis, but you have a development, and to meet some requirement, you've gotta have 5% open spaces, and we're calling that open spaces, so they met the requirement. I don't know that condition I just described exists. I was asking you, is that a condition?
Okay, in our zoning ordinance, there is a section called landscaped open area, but that only applies to R2 and R3 zone properties. This is a R1 zone property, so it doesn't have that requirement. It only has the requirement for the having amenities based on the number of units.
That's okay. Any other questions? Okay, so we're gonna open public comment on this item, and I usually will let the applicant speak first, so if you are...
I have a microphone.
No, 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 you can just come to the microphone and state your name for the record, yes.
My name's Eric Vasquez, I'm one of the project owners and developer. Thank you for having me tonight. I really can't add much more than I thought staff did a really nice job on the report, and I just wanted to say thank you to staff. I know we've kinda had a couple starts and stops with this project. We've had a couple different renditions over the years, with, you know, a lot of times it was constraints with road widths and fire, and this is the project we ultimately came with. So I appreciate staff sticking with us during this project. I'm here tonight to answer any questions that you may have, and Tom Jess, our architect, is also here if you have any other questions. But overall, I think we're gonna provide a nice housing project to Lompoc. You know, we really did try to go with single-family homes. I can't remember who I spoke to, this is one of the city council members several years ago, and they had expressed an interest or a preference at that time for family homes and, you know, move up families, so that's really what we were targeting here.
Thank you. Are you okay with the conditions of approval as they are stated?
I am, yes, I met with staff probably in November, I believe, both our planners and all of the other departments, and we went through the conditions one by one, and we worked through them, and we're good.
All right.
I didn't know about what you just described about the in lieu fee and the state bonus density, so that was news to me, but our architect said that is what it is.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone at this time.
All right, I'm gonna close public comments. Commissioners, do we want to just go ahead and make a motion?
I move we accept staff's recommendations.
I second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion passes, 3-0, and this is approved. Thank you very much, so I'm gonna close the item, and we're gonna move to new business, any new business?
None at this time.
Thank you. And we're gonna open again the oral communications. Again, this is when people are able to speak about things that are not on the agenda. There is no one here to even rise for that, but is there anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone.
All right, then we're gonna close oral communication and move to writ communications. Any writ communications?
None.
All right, director staff communications, I know there's a few of those.
Yes, we do have some of those. I first wanted to go ahead and put the screen on, there was a request for a schedule for our circulation element update, so I just put something together for you to take a look at, and probably a small discussion. So we've been very consumed in the housing element, and we'll talk about that during the director's report as well. Our goal is to finalize the admin draft by March 15th, or next month, and then the following month, release a 30-day public review draft, and then subsequent hearings, both the planning commission and city council. So we're looking at about a four-month schedule here to get this in line. This isn't a major overhaul of the element, it is essentially some little minor revisions, tweaks to make it compliant with, there's two plans that were approved in the last three years, one, the streetscape multimodal improvement plan, and a bike and pedestrian plan was almost three years ago. So we need to have all those plans consistent, and so we're looking at that primarily engineering and planning, and we're gonna bring that back with a revised map, and we'll solicit it for public comment and bring it to the commission and the council. So if that's okay, that's the schedule we're proposing for the element.
Commissioner Bridge?
I have two questions. Is the March 15th date the date we will see it? When do we see it?
That's a good question. I think you would be able to look at it when we release it to the public, so we would post it on our website, we can certainly send you a link, but that would be, the public draft is when the commission would also see it. Yeah, the admin is supposed to be just internal staff, so yeah, April 1st.
I'm not sure exactly how to word this, but you mentioned there's been two studies/plans approved by the city council, and you're integrating those?
Correct.
Should there be a conflict between those plans and the desire of the general plan or the existing general plan? Will the planning commission have the ability to choose which they want to move forward to the council, or is the fact that the council already approved them mean they're mandated to be in the general plan?
Well, first of all, we're going to update the element so there isn't a conflict. We can't legally bring it to you if there's a conflict between those. They all need to be consistent, so I'm not quite sure your exact question regarding choosing.
Well, let's say it a different way. If those studies change the general plan, will that be a mandated change or a change that's brought here for us to review?
It needs to be a change so that it's consistent, eternally consistent with that element.
I think maybe to, I think what we will do, I don't know exactly the plans that have been adopted, but Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, what we'll do is we'll bring you the proposed plan, and whatever you, just like with the housing element, you will make a recommendation to the council, and whatever you recommend, that recommendation goes to council. As part of the presentation that we'll make to you at the meeting, we'll tell you if there are legal requirements for things that have to be included in that element, we'll advise you of that. And if there are things that you have, that you can do whatever you want with, then we'll advise you of that as well, and then your recommendation will go up. I don't know if that addresses all your questions, but that's kinda how it works.
Well, I'll just highlight my concern.
Sure.
I believe plans and studies such as the two that were referenced there get passed by the council without recognizing some of the implications. And where the implications start to become obvious is when the general plan gets impacted. And I'm just trying to understand, you know, at one time you told me the general plan is the constitution, and now I'm trying to understand is, well, do those plans mandate that our constitution changes? And what I'm hearing is we will at least know what those changes are, and we can make our suggestions.
I think one of the, just a really kinda bare bones example is, there were new bike paths, bike routes that were added as part of the pedestrian and bike plan, master plan. And then there are also facilities, bike facilities, that were changed along Ocean and North H. For example, I think we probably recall talking about it, but a separated bike path, well, we already have a sidewalk, a separated bike path along H and Ocean. So right now, that's not shown on the circulation element. So that needs, the circulation element needs to show that new facility along H and Ocean so that they're consistent. So just kind of a quick example, there's others.
Yeah, the one that particularly seemed problematic to me was, if I remember the plan correctly, there is an indication that traffic calming bulb-outs will become the standard. And I'm not sure the council recognized what that meant when they approved that. So for example, a bulb-out at the corner of H and Ocean might not be something that, on a personal level, I would think would be a good idea. And if something like that comes in because, oh, the transportation plan got approved, and on page 43 it said bulb-outs are a good idea, so we gotta roll that into the general plan, that's the kinda thing I have concerns with.
Brian, is the, I'm just gonna ask for a clarification too, so is the transportation plan that Commissioner Bridge is referring to, is that just sort of a non-binding kind of vision plan?
So it's a good question, not necessarily. You do make a really good point, so there are some approval, there are some things in the streetscape multimodal plan that shows reducing lanes. And so the goal of reducing lanes in certain sections of town, it's not all along H and Ocean, would allow a bicycle facility to be installed on a state highway, and in order to do that, there just isn't physical room. So yeah, that will be a good discussion to speak about. It's not throughout town, but there are areas along West Ocean is a good example, where that is recommended for that facility. So where it gets a little tricky is, in order to build some of those things, you'll need additional environmental review, so I'll have to highlight it in the staff report and part of my presentation, because we're not doing additional environmental review for things like that, but it is covering those new facilities. So it'll be an interesting discussion, yeah, there is traffic calming measures, so it'll be an interesting discussion.
But I think the gist of the question was, is that plan a binding document, or is it just a advisory, or, you know, like this is what we should do versus we already approved that stuff, so it's going to happen?
I believe it is, but there's probably certain components that are not. So I'll discuss it with the city attorney's office and the consultant. It is a very, very good point, so we'll circle back and look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that item? Okay, the second item is the general plan housing element. I apologize, this one is a little bit of a thorn in my side, I'm gonna be very honest. On January 29th, we got another letter from the state Housing and Community Development Department, and I was expecting a certification letter from the state, but we did not. We got a five-page letter with additional corrections. So we have a meeting tomorrow, a phone meeting with the state, and I could certainly email this to you, I also brought hard copies, if you want a hard copy. After looking at this five-page comment letter and discussing it with our consultant, we believe that we could address it pretty easily. Unfortunately, the state is very nitpicky, and they even brought up a few comments that are new, which I wasn't expecting. Some of it involves additional analysis, for example, describing better trends for development in town, for example, sites that are partially vacant. Some are modifying programs, so I believe it will need to come back to the commission and the council. But we are going to do an informal review with the state before we bring it back to the commission and the council to make sure that we have everything situated. I did provide to the state our approval of the rezoned sites, so they have that, that is mentioned in the letter, so that's a comment that we've already addressed. But it's unfortunate because we are going to have to re-adopt the element again. So I wish I had better news, but at the same time, talked to a lot of people, and this is not uncommon. So that's the second director staff communication, are there any questions on that before I get to the next item?
Commissioner Bridge, you.
I have two questions or one comment, I would like an email of that.
Okay.
Good. And does that mean we are no longer in compliance or not in compliance with the general plan requirements we were all so concerned about?
So I'm gonna respond, and then maybe Brian Wright-Bushman can also piggyback. So the adopted element is in effect, so we are using it now. But because it hasn't been certified yet from the state, we do have, as I've mentioned over and over at a lot of meetings, that could jeopardize funding. I don't think we have anything to worry about, because I think we can address these comments fairly easily, it just takes staff time and it takes a little more analysis. But we can enforce, and it is in effect, it was adopted November 21st, and there was a grace period, but we can enforce our housing element for projects that come in and such, so.
So the answer to your question is no, we're not in compliance.
So builder's remedy is back on the table?
It was always on the table, and it's still on the table.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
And then once you address those comments, it comes back to us to review and then to council again?
Correct.
Okay.
So you get another shot at it.
Well, you have my sympathy.
Okay, let's move on.
All right, the next item, I'm gonna have Mr. Stones pull up a website for me. This was actually a quest by Commissioner Bridge, a very good question, but it's regarding Assembly Bill 2097. And in short, that's a bill that was signed by the governor on September 22nd, 2022, effective January 1st, 2023, so it's already been in effect a year. And I'm just gonna quickly read something, and then we're gonna look at maps, I don't know if you guys like maps, but I do. Essentially, what that assembly bill does is it prohibits a public agency from imposing any minimum automobile parking requirement on any residential, commercial, or other development project as defined that is located within one-half mile of public transit as defined. Sequo Section 2115. Sequo Section 2115, as well as Government Code Section 21064.3 defines, that word is very important, what is public transit? So, and then it also, it defines what a major transit stop is. So we wanted to show you something that our, our regional planning agency has up. Could you go to the front of the website, Greg? Yeah, scroll to the top. Okay, scroll down a little bit more. So this area talks about AB 2097, transit priority area, transit priority projects, and high-quality transit corridors. So in order for this to apply, it needs to be, it needs to include a public transit, specifically a major transit stop. So a major transit stop includes the following: an existing rail or bus rapid transit station, a ferry terminal served by either a bus or rail transit service, and third, and probably the most important, intersection of two or more bus routes with a frequency of service interval of 15 minutes or less during the morning and afternoon peak commute periods. So our regional planning agency, Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, says, based on their review, and I do agree with it, although it could be challenged, that there's only six locations for the whole county that meet that definition of a major transit stop. And in that, it includes the region's five rail stations and Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District Transit Center, not our transit center. The Santa Barbara MTD has three routes, again, that's in Santa Barbara, not Long Poak, that meets the 15-minute frequency requirements. And then there's also a line, a bus line in Isla Vista and Glida, but it does not intersect with other qualifying routes. So if you zoom in on that map that Mr. Stones has up on the website, and he's going to zoom in on Long Poak, you'll see the legend to the left, a major transit stop, so that's important. And then if there is a major transit stop, there would be a buffer, a one-half-mile buffer around the major transit stop. So the whole city of Long Poak does not have a singer, single major transit stop. You might think, how is that possible? I think the Albertson's Transit Center was mentioned, the one off of Cypress and I is our transit center. Maybe you can, can you zoom out on that one, Greg? Cypress and I. That one does not qualify. I think when this first came out, I thought, hmm, maybe it would. I've talked to the transit manager, I've talked to our regional planning agency, and it does not qualify. A bus does not come there every 15 minutes. So he's showing you where it is. So it's, it's fortunate but unfortunate. You could say, well, it's fortunate because, you know, it does have an impact on the surrounding area if you build projects without parking. Or you could say it's unfortunate because it, it could potentially encourage and incentivize development, because parking is very costly to build, very, very costly. Now, if he zooms out, I want to show you the closest one we have. Greg's going to show you where it is, very far away, and it's not in the city limits. That's right. So you can see the Surf Beach, zoom in on that a little more, is the only one we have, and it's not even close to the city, in my opinion. I mean, what is that, like eight to nine miles? So they did draw the buffer around that, but you're not going to see any development in that area, unfortunately.
It's a base.
Yeah. So there are some other things that they talk about. I didn't really necessarily want to get into those. They talk about transit priority areas and transit priority projects and high-quality transit corridors. At the end of the day, we don't have any major transit stops, so it really limits the, you know, some of those bills being implemented in the city of Long Poak. So that concludes the director report on that particular item. If there aren't any questions?
Any questions?
Well, I, I really have just one comment. So when we started this, we thought that Cypress and I was a transit center. I believe we've had conversations to that effect, and I was, I was trying to say, well, if that was one, then Albertson's is one. I'm calling it Albertson's, whatever the road is. So in essence, we've come the other side of what I thought. So that was an interesting.
Yeah, I stand corrected. Like I said, when the bill was first passed, I thought maybe.
We all did.
That one did, but I guarantee if you go out there, it won't come every 15 minutes. And I came to the transit manager, are you sure? We don't have the 15-minute headways? He's like, no, Brian, we don't. Maybe 30.
Try an hour.
Oh, an hour? Okay. Yeah, so, I don't know. I mean, you could look at it both ways, so, but we just, we just don't have it. So that does conclude the director's staff.
Thank you very much for those interesting facts. Okay, so we're going to close director staff communication. Any commissioner requests? I just have a couple of like curiosity-driven questions. I want to know what's going on with the El Pollo Loco and the Smart and Final projects.
Yeah, I can give you an update. So El Pollo Loco is definitely moving forward. It's in plan check.
It doesn't look like, but okay.
Well, at least they did demolish that old building that had, in the back, if you ever saw the back, there was a fire there, probably more than one. So at least that structure has been removed, but it is in plan check. They're the same developer, or I should say, same applicant that built the Dutch Brothers. So they really are on it, but unfortunately, it does take time. Now, Smart and Final, not as positive. So they came to us saying that that project had a shortfall of $2 million. And how much you could do when you have a shortfall of that much? So they've been scrambling, trying to find ways to reduce the cost of the construction. They said they wanted to remove some, like, the little cart corral in the front. We said, yeah, you can do that. Still needs to be screened, and they talked to us about some landscaping elements, and, you know, we, we said there's some flexibility on that, some fencing, you know, pretty relatively small. I think one of the big items was traffic fees. They did get a fee credit, but it's not $2 million. So you haven't seen these signs for, for sale, but it might potentially be either up for sale or might be built later. They have a building permit ready to be picked up, and they have not picked it up.
I, I just, you know, it's, it's disheartening when you see buildings being demolished and then nothing going, going up. It's like, like, we are allowing them to take, to, to, you know, tear down stuff in our city, and then just, sorry, we're done. And I don't know what we can do about it, probably not much, but, you know, I think before we allow them to, to take stuff out, we need to make sure they are able to put something else in this place. That's, that's what I, what I think about, but. I'm glad to hear about El Pollo Loco, but yeah, this Smart and Final thing is, you know, it's concerning, yeah, because obviously it was also, you know, an earlier approved, it was approved much earlier than El Pollo Loco, and still.
I think it's been about a year.
Yeah, and, and, and they did, they did tear down Pizza Garden and, and whatever the other Chinese.
Right.
Place was there, and now there's like a big gaping hole there, and it's like, what's going to go? What's going to happen there?
They have even explored, they came to Greg and I, explored potentially another building pad in there. It would be tight. It would be very tight. There are some things in the code that could reduce parking, but we think it would still be very, very tight. May not even meet the, it probably wouldn't meet the parking requirement for that standalone lot, so we don't know what's going to happen, you know, kind of like the 510 mixed-use project across the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was, and that's another example of that, like, they took down, they took out whatever was there, or, I don't know.
Well, that was in really bad condition, those homes.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah, and now we're like, you know, we're in like, we're in an eternal construction place, which, or a construction site, which we don't know when, some, I don't know, it's just, it's just discouraging.
But we could continue to keep updated, maybe in the next several months, if we have a date, update, we can give that to you.
Thank you. All right, any, anything else? All right, we're going to move to our adjournment. I move that we adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, March 13, 2024. Do you have a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.